Good evening and welcome to the November 4, 2024, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, both of which can be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with these projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will call roll. Commissioner Beruzzi is absent at the moment. Commissioner Doe, present. Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. So we have six commissioners in chambers, with Commissioner Beruzzi absent, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is the reports and announcement section. Mr. Prada, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So just one staff update, I just wanted to alert the commission. I think many commissioners may be aware, but this Thursday, November 7, at 6:30 PM at the Bell Haven Community Campus or at 100 Terminal Avenue, the city's housing team is hosting a community meeting on anti-displacement strategies. So an outreach meeting to discuss potential strategies that will ultimately inform a future city council study session on anti-displacement. So the first meeting is this Thursday, November 7. This meeting will be in English. Following week, on the 14th, we'll be hosting the same community meeting in Spanish. So that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions regarding that announcement? Great. Do commissioners have any announcements of their own? Or reports? All right. Seeing no more reports and announcements, we will move into the public comment component of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have the chance to speak when we get to that item on our agenda. So to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for this evening, Mr. Pruder, to explain how to participate, and then please to begin our general public comment period. Thank you.
If I may.
Please.
Before Mr. Pruder goes, if I could just note for the record and for those that are attending online that may now have noticed or seen that Commissioner Beruzzi had arrived at 7:07 PM. So we'll just note that for a minute taker and for anyone following along at home.
Thank you. So with Commissioner Beruzzi's arrival, we now have seven commissioners present in chambers. Thank you, Mr. Pruder. Go for it.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Good evening, everyone. Regarding the procedures for public comment, we are now doing the first round of public comment for items on the agenda, and any members of the public in the council chambers at this time, please feel free to fill out a comment card, which is located at the back of the council chambers, and bring it to my desk, and you would be able to speak upon receipt of that. Anyone who is participating remotely via Zoom, feel free to press the hand icon, that button on the Zoom interface on your device. And if anyone is calling by phone, you may press star nine, and you will similarly be able to have your hand raised, and we'll be able to allow you to speak for public comment as well. At the moment, I don't see any hands raised or any comment cards coming my way, so we can wait a moment if you'd like. Chair, thank you.
Let's just wait one more moment, give folks a chance to use the technology. Do we have any requests to speak at this point?
Thank you, Chair. At this time, I still see no requests.
All right. Given that we have no requests for this component of public comment, I will go ahead and close this public comment portion of our agenda and move quickly to item E, which is our consent calendar. However, there are no items in our consent calendar for this evening's meeting, so we will move past the consent calendar and into the public hearing component of our meeting. We have three items in our public hearing section of the agenda today. The first one is with regard to our, excuse me, a use permit for 5 Shasta Lane. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit for excavation within the required rear setback for retaining wall on a property located in the R1S, or single-family residential suburban zoning district, and determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA Guidelines, Section 15303's Class III exemption for new construction or conversion of smaller structures. The retaining wall is associated with construction of a new detached ADU, which is a permitted use, although the excavation would also allow for a larger flat yard area. Mr. Rogers, I believe you are here to represent this project this evening. Are there any changes or additions to the staff report for the commission?
Thank you, Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. Staff does not have any additions or changes to the staff report, but as always, we're happy to answer questions if you have any. And I am informed that the property owner, John Chow, is participating remotely this evening and would be prepared to make some brief remarks and answer questions if there are any.
Thank you. Mr. Chow, would you like to say a few words at this point in our meeting? If you are in line, I can't confirm that from this vantage point. Mr. Pruder, can we give him the opportunity to chime in if he's present?
If I may, through the chair, I have tried promoting Mr. Chow to panelist, so I believe he should be able to now participate. I will ask Mr. Chow to unmute, and it looks like you're there. Thank you very much.
So I was just going to observe. I don't have anything, any presentation prepared, and I don't have any remarks prepared. I just wanted to see the process.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. No need, no requirement by any stretch to say anything. If there are questions that come up, feel free to, we can re-promote you to speaker if necessary. All right. So since we have touched base with Mr. Rogers from a staff perspective, at this time, before we start public comments, I would like to just check in with commissioners, do we have any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. There's a question for Mr. Rogers. If, I was just hoping you could briefly remark on what specifically the planning commission should be looking at when reviewing this permit. In the last meeting, you did that, and it was very helpful. So I also hope you could do that again. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so the zoning ordinance does establish in the districts, establish general requirements, general regulations, that excavation in the required setbacks in residential districts does require planning commission use permit review. As we talked about last week with a different project, the use permit findings are enumerated in the zoning ordinance and replicated in your draft action resolution. And they essentially relate to a statement that there is no material harm to other properties, investments, general health, safety, and welfare of the city. And so it's not, like we talked about last week, it's not a variance where a unique hardship or special privilege has to be granted, or finding that there is not a special privilege is granted. It's more looking at the project. Can you identify any specific harm that would prevent you from making the use permit findings? From our perspective as staff, just working in a recommending capacity, we noted that the area of excavation would not be particularly visible from the public right-of-way, from the adjacent properties. It would follow all standard building permit procedures regarding stability, including a soils report that's analyzed by experts in that field. And so we were comfortable saying that it would be, we could make the use permit findings that there would not be a material detrimental impact, either to the immediate neighbor's property in the vicinity, or the city's overall health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. And was there a, is there a notice requirement for a permit like this for the surrounding neighbors?
Yeah, it's the exact same for any other use permit. We do send one notice when the application initially comes in to all properties, owners, and renters, if there's a difference. So if you live in your property that you own, you get one notice of the property. If you reside elsewhere but own the property, you get a notice at your other address, and the resident of the property also gets a notice. And that is for 300 feet. And then when the item, any item, use permit item is scheduled for a public hearing, we also send another notice about two and a half weeks before, notifying them of the meeting, saying you can come and comment, or you can contact staff to have other participation options. And that, again, that is the same for any use permit that the planning commission would see.
Got it. Thank you. No other questions. Thank you, Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. I have two brief questions for staff, for Mr. Rogers. I wanted to confirm that it is the building department's area of expertise and responsibility to use their knowledge to ensure things like the height, structure, composition, angle, size of the retaining wall, to ensure that it actually functions as a retaining wall with the protective nature. That is not our consideration tonight. That's something that the building department oversees and ensures. Is that correct?
It is definitely the building division's primary responsibility, and they have expertise and training and certifications exactly along those lines. The use permit findings are broad enough that I think a commission could bring up aspects of that, but it most likely would need to be related to other findings, again, since the building division are the technical experts in this area.
Thank you. And then I have something that is a little bit broader than just this project, because the staff report talks about the rear setback requirements for ADU for the city as being slightly different than what the state is currently requiring. And if my notes are correct here, it talks about our current ADU requirement, rear setbacks, say 10 feet, but state law says 4 feet. I was curious about, and it makes reference to those things being updated in the near-to-moderate future. So this may be a broader question than just to you, Mr. Roger, but when, what is the approximate timing for updating that part of the zoning code?
I might defer that one to Kyle, because I think he's got a broader view of the overall department priorities. But I would note, it definitely is a known priority, and it's something that we've documented internally as a disconnect, and that planners need to be applying these state standards. But Kyle may have a better sense of how it aligns with other department and division priorities.
Yeah, so I can add to that. So it's something that we in the community development department are actively looking through or looking at in terms of our overall priorities, our resources, and where the city's ADU ordinance fits within those. And so it is something that we're actively looking through. I would say it's likely something that we would be looking to prioritize some point next year, you know, whether that's in the first quarter or kind of the second quarter. I think it's something that we know after January will be something we'll look at in terms of the overall work plan for the year. And I think January does time nicely with any other potential updates to state laws that might take effect, so kind of timing it once any new laws come into play. That's also important for us to make sure that we update it once. Well, we'll probably have to continue updating it, but again, a comprehensive update at the start of the year is ideal. So, and that update process can take, you know, multiple months, and it depends on the council's direction in terms of any outreach and public meetings and, you know, that go beyond like the standard minimum requirement. So we'll be looking at a number of different factors there, and so a timeline is really difficult to say at this point. But something that we, as Mr. Rogers mentioned, understand is an important ordinance update that we need to embark on in the near future.
Thank you. Even with sort of just a directional sense, it's helpful to know that. So that is, those were the only clarifying questions that I had. Do any other commissioners have clarifying questions? All right. Mr. Pruder, could you please call for public comment and give instructions for item F1 for this evening?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Schindler. Excuse me. At this time, with public comment for this item, any members of the public in the council chambers, please feel free to give me a comment card, and you'll be able to speak on this item. And alternatively, any members of the public on Zoom, please feel free to raise your hand using the hand icon on your Zoom interface, or if by calling by phone, you can press star nine, and we will similarly see that you would like to speak. And I still see no hands raised or comment cards, and we can wait a moment more if you'd like. Thank you.
Do we have any hands raised at this time?
I can confirm we still do not have any hands raised or comment cards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think then I will go ahead and close a public comment for item F1 and bring the discussion back to the commission for questions, commentary, and ultimately, a motion with regard to the use permit.
I can make a quick comment.
Sure, please, Commissioner Beruzzi.
As always, I am encouraged to see that our laws are allowing flexibility for people to have multi-generational households on one property. So anything that facilitates that, that doesn't seem to harm the city, which just doesn't, seems like a good idea to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. Vice Chair Eric.
I would like to move that we approve as per the staff report.
I'll second. Great. We have a first from Vice Chair Eric and a second from Commissioner Farrak to approve the motion and grant the use permit. Seeing no other questions, I will go ahead and call the vote for commissioners. Commissioner Beruzzi. Yes. Commissioner Doe. Yes. Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is seven yeses, and we, the resolution moves forward. Congratulations. Thank you. We wish you good luck. If you're still in line. All right. We will now move into the second item in our public hearing, which is regarding the use permit for 1401 Santa Cruz Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence with a basement and detached garage, and construct a new, two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to lot width in the R1S, or single-family suburban residential zoning district. Determine this action is categorically exempt under the SEQA Guidelines 15303's Class III exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal also includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Ms. Khan, I believe you are here to speak on behalf of this project. Are there any updates to staff, from the staff report or presentations to be incorporated?
Good evening, Chair Schindler and fellow planning commissioner members and members of the public. Staff does not have an update to the staff report. We do have the applicant team and architect in attendance to provide a quick presentation of the project, as well as answer any questions. If we could have Ms. Chu come to the dais for introduction and presentation, please.
Perfect. Do we have, do you have slides? Or we would need to make sure. There we go. Perfect. Check that microphone. Let's be sure that that's working, so we can make sure online folks can hear.
Oh, hi. Hello. Good evening. Ready to go? Okay, we'll get started. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Hannah Chu. I work with Thomas James Holmes, applicant and representative for the project at 1401 Santa Cruz. I also have our Director of Ford Planning here, Alicia Wilson. And as mentioned, our project architect, Jamie Matherin, she is joining us digitally on Zoom. But we'll be representing, should there be any questions after our presentation. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm just going to hop right in. Starting off, we are proposing a new, two-story, single-family residence located on the corner of Santa Cruz Avenue and Cotton Street. You can see in our site here, site context arrow. Thank you. And here on this slide, you'll find our existing site conditions showing the single, the existing single-family home with a detached garage against our proposed home placed on the site. The existing site plot is shown on the left of the screen, where the existing structures have been hatched in red. And then you'll see on the right, our proposed home laid onto the site, context, hatched in blue, for reference. And here, you'll see our streetscape showing a rendering of the proposed home to provide context with our next-door neighbor along Santa Cruz Avenue, as well as our neighbor on Cotton Street. That neighbor is sharing our rear boundary line. And then next here, we just are showing our right-in-front elevations. The home will be a combination of horizontal siding on the upper level, and then we have board and batten along the lower level. We're proposing single-hung windows, and the roof above the bay window on the left side of the home, you'll see is a standing seam metal roof. And we are proposing a front-facing two-car garage. Oh, and also just to mention, in this slide, oh, sorry. Sorry, it's still in this slide, showing the front and the right elevation. You'll also see on the right of the screen, that's just showing the right variation of the entryway courtyard. And so for reference, that door is our external door to the ADU. And here, you'll see our left and rear elevations. Same materials. Move on. Moving on to our next slide. So I don't believe our homeowners are, I don't know if they're listening in on the hearing tonight. They're actually expecting their newest addition to their family tonight. So I think it's their third. But, so they may be listening, so if they are listening. But here, we just have the colors and materials board selected by the homeowners. And you can also see renderings of the home, just to provide better context of what we're proposing. The home will be painted white heron. That's the upper right-hand swatch. The door will be painted the link gray. And as mentioned previously, it's going to be board and batten siding on the first floor, lap siding on the second floor. And we can just quickly run through the floor plan here. This is our proposed first-floor plan. This is going to be where the majority of our living spaces are, the great room, kitchen, you know, flex playroom, dining area, laundry room. And then although not a part of this application is mentioned, but the AD was also on the first floor. That's in the hatch gray area along the left side of the home. And then moving on to, this is a second-story floor plan. It's going to have all the bedrooms, the grand suite. It's going to be three bedrooms and a loft. And so in total, the home has four bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms, with the additional, the ADU. Thank you. And finally, just going to go over our planning plan. So we have a total of 14 trees that were inventoried by our project arborist. Six of these trees are protected. We are removing a total of nine trees. Of these trees, we're proposing to remove. Two of them are protected. So we submitted for our heritage tree removal permit, got that approved. So tree number five is an English walnut, one of which we're proposing to remove, and tree number 12 is a cherry tree. Tree number 12 was recommended for removal by our project arborist due to poor condition, and tree number five is proposed for removal just due to construction impacts. And just for context, so tree number five is in the rear right of the yard, and then tree number 12 is located along the left side yard. And then we are proposing a total of nine new trees to be replanted. Four will be in the front yard. One of those trees will be a box, a maple. That is a required replacement tree for the heritage trees that we're removing. And then we have five trees in the rear yard. And that concludes my brief presentation. So thank you for your time tonight. And as mentioned, my team is here to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. At this time, do commissioners have any, before we move into public comment, do commissioners have clarifying questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay. I have one brief question for staff. With regard to the line of sight on that corner, since it's a corner piece, a corner property, what are the restrictions about what is permitted or not permitted in that line-of-sight corner?
Thank you, Chair Schindler, for your question. So in the area of the line of sight, the restriction is that fences should be no taller than three feet. If someone is proposing any sort of shrubs along that area, they're also regulated under the fence regulations, and they cannot be over three feet as well. But in terms of trees, we have allowed mature trees to grow there.
Thank you. I appreciate that detail. Seeing no other clarifying questions from commissioners, Mr. Pruder, could you please give instructions and start public comment for item F2?
Thank you very much, Chair Schindler. At this time, we have public comment for this item, and anyone interested in the council chambers can provide me with a comment card, and you'll be able to speak on this item. Alternatively, those on Zoom could raise their hand by pressing the hand icon, and that would also indicate a desire to speak, and we'd let you speak in that case as well. And if you're calling by phone, you may press star nine on your keypad, and similarly, you'd be able to speak on this item by phone. I don't see any hands raised or comment cards, and I'm happy to wait a little longer to confirm at this time. Thank you.
I'll just give it a couple seconds. Do we have any hands raised at this time?
I can confirm we still have no hands raised and no comment cards. Thank you.
Okay. Given that we have no requests for public comment, I will go ahead and close the, that, the public component, public comment component of this agenda item, and bring the discussion back to the commission. Questions, comments, and ultimately, a motion on this project. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Through the chair, I think I have a question for the applicant. The context for my question is that I believe in our zoning code, we normally require two-car garages, as is the case in this project. Sometimes we'll approve a one-car garage if there is enough other parking. I was curious whether a one-car garage was considered as part of this project.
So we are proposing a two-car garage. So are you just wondering why a one-car garage was not proposed?
Last, I was first wondering, was it considered?
Was it considered? No, I think just with the state, you know, of this being a growing family, I think the fact that the two-car garage, and as, you know, as they grow, I think they need the extra, the additional cars. And they also have the ADU component. So it was not considered, no.
Okay, that's totally fair. My follow-up question to that, and I realize if maybe, I meant, you're from Thomas James Homes. I know Thomas James built a lot of homes in Menlo Park. And to the extent you're comfortable commenting, I'm wondering if we did not have in our zoning code the requirement for a two-car garage, if a one-car garage was more explicitly allowed, would that be an option that Thomas James Homes would be excited about? Would it expand possibilities in terms of the homes that you're building?
So you're, sorry, let me just repeat that back to you. If you're, you're just kind of wondering if one-car garage was the code requirement, would that be enticing to potential future builders' designs?
And owners, yes.
And owners. I guess it depends on the, I think it depends on many things. The existing site, the site constraints, you know, what type of design of home that we could fit onto the lot. And I think also the things that we do keep in mind when we propose these, you know, what homes go on these lots is also a lot to do with neighborhood context. And so if we find, you know, the pattern in the neighborhood, a lot of them are single-car garages, if they're front-facing, if they're rear-side, you know, access, we kind of keep that in mind as well as to, you know, what home we kind of choose for that site, for that neighborhood. We want it to fit. And then also, you know, there's components of, you know, future buyers and residences and, but you know, that can get a little bit, you know, just depending what the buyer's looking for and then what we have to offer. If they, you know, wanted a one-car garage, potentially we'll find them, you know, another property that that works for, you know, works better for. So I think it's, sorry if that was not a very black-and-white answer, but it's, I think, very contextual to the buyers, to the neighborhood, you know, what kind of home, you know, is being built there and for who, so.
Thank you. It was not a black-and-white question, so I appreciate it. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Through the chair, question for the applicant or staff. On page one of the project description letter, it mentions that there is two points of access to the driveway due to the traffic impacts of Santa Cruz. But I wasn't sure if I saw that in the plans. Could you perhaps elaborate on what that means? Like, is there a way to get to the driveway from Cotton?
Yeah, so our driveway approach, and I don't know if it's possible to get the, one of my slides up there, but if not, I can just describe it. So we, our driveway approach, we have an access point coming off of Santa Cruz Avenue. And then we also have the paved driveway portion coming off of Cotton as well. If that, and so I don't know if that, oh, maybe we have a visual here. Sorry, I know my slides, looking at them, they were pretty faint when I was looking up above presenting. Maybe you can kind of see it, but... Yeah, so, right, off Santa Cruz, we have an access point. Off Cotton, we have an access point, just right there. Yeah. Does that clarify, is that?
The cursor is over the back of the property, and it does say that there's a gate there. So is it, are we talking about access to the rear?
No.
Okay.
And so that little rectangle is just kind of calling out potential ADU uncovered parking space. But that would be the driveway entrance coming off of Santa Cruz. And then if you do a 90-degree, you know, go in left, that will, if you drove that direction, you would drive right into Cotton Street. And so those would be the two points of access to the garage.
Okay, I see. Thank you, that's clear. It was a little hard to see that in the 3D rendering, but that makes sense now. Just to kind of kick off the discussion, I guess from my perspective, it seems like the main reason we're reviewing this project is because it's four feet short of our standard lot width. So it's a substandard lot, but everything else meets zoning requirements. It seems like the project fits in with the community. I don't see anything controversial in the plans. And it meets all the other zoning requirements. I think I already said that. So I plan to support this project, pending other comments from other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Since you had mentioned the specific double-access driveway, just comment to the applicant is, I thought that was particularly smart given the layout of the position of the product, the property and the house. I just thought that was a highly functional component. And then just a comment, really for staff in this case. I really just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge and appreciate the work that the staff does on projects like this one. Projects that the Planning Commission weighs in on because it's a single-family lot that's slightly substandard. We've seen a number of these in recent meetings. And I appreciate that staff invests time and effort, and that my fellow commissioners are investing time and effort in reviewing these as really required by the city's ordinances and plans. And while these projects may seem simple and straightforward compared to a number of other complicated or high-impact projects that the Planning Department is driving forward at the request of City Council, like downtown parking, lot development, or park line, these types of projects that we're talking about with this one and have talked about in prior projects are still required by the policies that govern our city. So thank you for continuing to invest in these projects. Other commissioners? Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just say, like, Commissioner Sellen, it meets all the zoning requirements, so. Before I, I'd like to make a motion before I do that. I just wanted to say, it's always nice to see, I appreciate seeing the landscape plan. I believe it's not necessarily required at this point, but it's nice to see beyond the trees that are required for replacing a heritage tree that's removed. It's, I believe there's more trees being proposed beyond what's just required. And it's nice because sometimes, I think, non-heritage trees don't require replacement trees. Anyway, the generous amount of trees for screening is nice in maintaining the canopy in our city. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Commissioner, we have a first from Commissioner Doe. Commissioner Farick, I saw you raise your hand.
Yes, I have a comment, and then I would, I will second the motion, concur with other comments, and just appreciate a couple small details that aren't small to me. But I really like that there's sort of a clear ADU separation. It's sort of not morphed into kind of back-of-house. It's like, actually, like, looks like it'll function as a separate housing unit, either for extended family or somebody that they can rent it to. So that's great. And then, secondly, just appreciating that it's a, you know, lovely-designed house. It's not maxing out on the height. And I appreciate that, because that can kind of change the look and feel of the street when there's kind of one that's all the way up and everything else is kind of in the range that you've designed this one. So thank you.
And...
And I did second.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to be clear. We have a first from Commissioner Doe and a second from Commissioner Farick. Do we have any other comments or thoughts from commissioners before we move to a vote? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the vote. Commissioner Doe? Sorry, oh, Commissioner Beruzzi. Wow, sorry. Aye. Commissioner Doe. Yes. Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farick.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Aye.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. So that is seven votes in favor of the resolution. And we wish you good luck with your project. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item F3, regarding the Architectural Control and Sign Review for 639 and 641 Santa Cruz Avenue. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to, one, approve an architectural control permit to change the paint color of the front and rear facades of the building at 639 and 641 Santa Cruz Avenue. Install a mural on an existing electrical cabinet on the rear facade of the building. Replace the double-front door of the 639 Santa Cruz Avenue Suite with a single door, and add various architectural details to the front facade of the 641 Santa Cruz Avenue Suite. And, two, approve a sign permit for a second-blade sign on the front facade of the 641 Santa Cruz Avenue Suite that would also exceed three square feet in size at an existing building located in the SPEC, El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Hochleitner, are there updates to the staff report? Or I don't believe there's a presentation, but are there updates or comments from staff?
Good evening, thank you. Staff has no additional items to add to the staff report. We do have the applicant team and the business owner here. They will be available to answer questions. Charles Belzer is the architect, and Mr. Ali El-Safei is the business owner.
Welcome. Would you like to take this? You don't require it, but you are welcome to say a couple of words at this time before we move into clarifying questions and public comment.
Good evening, commission members. Thank you for hearing this today's evening. My name is Charles Belzer with Pacific Peninsula Architecture, and I'm here to represent the owners this evening. You probably have seen, Bistro Vita has been a part of downtown for over 25 years, and they're happily expanding with their new Loretta Bar expansion, which basically doubles the size of the business. And as part of that, they've had to go through a building permit process and tie the facades together. The existing Harvest space that was next door that they annexed. Can you hear me okay? Oh, very good. Space next door they annexed, you know, they tied the facade together with one banner color and really simplified the exterior a little bit to help draw out some of the existing elements on Bistro Vita. Regarding the rear of the property, I think, you know, they've had some issues with the back, with specifically graffiti on the electrical meter. And so, you know, they had a very creative solution, which I think has been very popular within the city, to cover that with a mural. And thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to public comment on this item, do commissioners have clarifying questions? Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, these are all these changes that we're discussing today already in place, or some in place and some have not been in place yet? That's my first question. And then the second question is, a lot of the language says "second-blade sign", but it wasn't clear if there is another blade sign that's either already there or... Yeah, I guess I didn't see two blade signs anywhere in the plans. Maybe that's my confusion.
Well, I'll answer the blade sign first. So there's an existing, small, circular blade sign that was approved for administrative permit with Kyle and Connor's work, and much appreciated. And so this existing, the Vita sign, which is the larger one we're coming in for today, has actually been in place for over 25 years. And as part of this process, you know, the owners really want to comply with the city regulations. So we've done our best to, you know, present this to you to maintain that sign, which is, you know, adds character to the downtown and I think is well-liked. And the second part of the question, yes. You know, they've been in this process of opening the business, and they're about to actually formally open very soon. And so as part of that process, I think, you know, they, some, there was some unclarity as to the approval process. And so they got a little ahead. And yes, all these items are in existence right now. So they've all been built.
Okay, thank you. And then I think this is a question for staff. In the sign review section, it discusses this notion of maximum-allowed sign areas being 75 square feet. And then it goes, the report says that this, the signage square footage for this business is well under that. But then it says that the reason this is being brought to us is because there's a separate code that specifically applies to the size of blade signs. And that is why, even though it's under the total signage square footage, it still needs to be reviewed. Is my understanding correct?
Yes, that's correct. So there, it's not specifically spelled out in the code. It's part of our sign design guidelines where it says that they should be up to three square feet. If you want to deviate from the sign guidelines, you may, but you have to get a sign review from the Planning Commission to do that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I would like to build on a clarifying question and a comment that you had made. Could you just tell us a little bit more about the confusion that you talked about? I'm curious about the factors that led to the implementation of all of the changes ahead of the typical city process.
So there's a few things. There's two aspects to this. There's one is part of the new and part of the existing Bistro Vita that has been in place for many years. And I can't really speak to that. That's before my time. So Kristy Porego is here, and would you like to speak on that? But regarding the new part, I think it's, you know, during construction process, they had people out there and...
Thank you. I just want to be sure that, so that people, if there's anyone online, if you speak into the microphone, that way we can be sure we hear both of you.
Sure. Well, I guess Bistro Vita's been there for over 25 years. And the permit requirements for paint and signage were not clear at that time. It's also before my time, but they, they didn't exist. And so the business has been there for so long when we started this construction project and started the permit process two years ago, almost. None of this came up. So we didn't realize that any, that we were not in compliance with the codes and permit process. So we're just trying to, you know, pay for whatever permits we need to and make sure that we're fully compliant since we're planning to open very soon next door. And we don't want to be making changes to facades and things once we open to the public.
Thank you for that additional context. Actually, I have a clarifying question to staff. Can you give us a brief overview of how the city typically handles enforcement of the zoning code as it relates to signage? Not specific to this project, but more broadly.
Sure. That's a good question. So we, the city does not have the manpower to police every inch of the city. I mean, we just don't have the people to do that. And so we rely heavily on complaint-based enforcement. So if we receive a complaint, we send our code enforcement officer out to the site, and they will inspect it. And then we'll... and they will inspect it and then we'll address it with the appropriate city department. So if it is a sign complaint, it will come to the planning department. If it's a building complaint, the building division will go out there. So it's, if we don't see it ourselves, it's, I don't think that there's a way for us to manage that kind of, um, like policing of the zoning code. So we really rely on the eyes and ears of the other people that live in the city to, you know, keep an eye out for things that we may not see. Specifically for the sign code, I think that there is, um, there might be some confusion about how the sign code applies to certain businesses, what is or isn't allowed. It, it can be confusing if you don't know, you know, the intricate details of how the signs work and how much sign space is allowed per business. In this particular case, there might have been a confusion because this is two businesses in one building. And so we go by parcel and the frontage of each parcel gets a certain amount of sign space. So if you weren't, uh, you didn't know the intricate details of like how each parcel is divided up, you may not know that you only get a certain amount of sign space per, per business. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. I think I have, I'll hold some, just a follow-up question for after we've done public comment. Are there other clarifying questions before we move into public comment? Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Yeah, I think question for staff as well. So I understand that 639 Santa Cruz is a new business and it's going through construction right now. For 641, if there were things done 20 years ago and then after that, we passed certain regulations regarding architectural controls or sign requirements, is it the case then that the owner is responsible for getting a permit for those things retroactively or coming into compliance? Is that what's happening in this case?
Yeah, this might be an opportunity to provide a little bit of clarity on that. And so I think, you know, our sign ordinance has potentially changed over time. I do want to clarify though that there were sign requirements in effect, you know, for decades. And so there has been ordinance, there have been permitting requirements. And so it's not so much that sign, that the ordinance has changed and then a business or a building or, or any potential operator needs to come into compliance with those. Those can definitely be legal non-conforming signs. I do think in this instance, the signs, and the staff report relays this. I mean, the signs were installed and we don't have records of a permit. There were permits around the same time they were issued for different signs so that the small blade sign that is currently there does actually have a permit. Or I should clarify that, I think there is a few signs that have permits from late 1990s in terms of like in our records, but a lot of the signage that's there doesn't have a permit. So the thing to clarify, the ordinance has been in fact, the sign design guidelines may have changed over time, but a number of the existing signs would have necessitated a permit at that time. And so this is an opportunity. And as my colleague, Mr. Hochleitner, mentioned, we, we don't enforce, you know, actively necessarily unless we hear complaints. However, when other permits are applied for or we're working with a business regarding other actions, such as we are in this case, you know, that is an opportunity for us to work with the business to bring them into compliance. And that is predominantly why we're here this evening, is to bring the business into compliance with the existing signage, the proposed signage, as well as the paint modifications that were made, which, which did require architectural control because the previous architectural control approved the facade that was previously there. So hopefully that provides a little more context for that. And was there another part of your question that I missed or did that answer it?
Yeah, that covered it. Thank you. No other questions, thank you.
Seeing no other clarifying questions from commissioners, Mr. Pruder, could you please provide instructions and open public comment on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you again, Chair Schindler. At this time, we have public comment for this item and any members of the public in the council chambers can provide a comment card to me to provide common, public comment in person. And those virtually attending can press this hand icon on their Zoom interface on their device and we can provide an opportunity for public comment there. And anyone using the phone, calling by phone can press star nine to provide public comment. And I see no hands raised and no comment cards. We can wait for a moment longer if you'd like. Thank you.
I think we have given folk good opportunity. Let's go ahead. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring the discussion back to commissioners for discussion, further questions either to staff or applicant, and ultimately a motion with regard to architectural control and the sign permit. Commissioner Beruzzi.
I just want to express my appreciation for the business owner and all that the business owner has done for downtown Menlo Park. I'm very excited about the changes. I think they're enhancing our downtown. I'm sorry that permitting is complicated and onerous, but I do want to express gratitude and hope for the future of these businesses. And I will be excited to help them move forward.
Thank you. I saw, Commissioner Farrick.
Thanks. I have some similar sentiments. I, disclosure, I do have meals and drinks at this restaurant from time to time. I do think I can be biased, I mean, not biased on this one. No, I, I, looking at this application through the lens of, you know, this would be very exciting to have come to our town now. It's very exciting to support a business's expansion that's been here and done so much for downtown for many years. And, you know, being not knowledgeable on blade sign requirements, I always thought those added a lot of character. So I actually was happy to see them in this application. So I also appreciate that the back is being addressed in a thoughtful way and just look forward to the expansion and being able to get a table at prime time. Thank you.
Commissioner Silverstein.
I want to echo the other comments. I want to emphasize how great I think that the mural on the electrical panel is. And whatever guidance I can give to staff for future projects or anyone listening, whatever we can do to beautify that parking lot in the back of Santa Cruz businesses sounds absolutely excellent and would encourage more murals and general public artwork in our town. So thank you.
Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. Yeah, I visited the property today because I was running an errand downtown. I'm also a patron of the restaurant. I appreciate all of the aesthetic value that it provides to our downtown. And I also echo Commissioner Silverstein's comments about the rear of the property and the mural. Just while I've been sitting up here, I've been trying to find, you know, the design guidelines and architectural control guidelines. And admittedly, I have no idea what I'm doing, but I haven't been able to find anything. So I was wondering if the applicant wouldn't mind commenting for your average business owner, Menlo Park, if they want to add a sign. And it sounds like Santa Cruz Avenue has particular rules, but I'm wondering if you might comment on how easy it is to find the requirements and the information when considering a new sign or changing paint color? How, yeah, how easy is it to find this information? Question for the applicant. Thank you.
I think it's relatively easy doing a Google search to find the sign guidelines and requirements. Didn't understand the color requirements at first, but now I get a better understanding of that. But yeah, it's a little bit new to me, more on the residential side typically. So, but I found it pretty, pretty easy.
All right, thank you. I have been Googling myself and having no luck, but I might be using the wrong keywords. I guess my comment is just whatever we can do to make it easy for business owners to be aware of and find these rules for whatever changes they want to make. I think that would be great. I realize these things were done 20 years ago, so that's a different situation. And yeah, the only comment I have, I have no intention of holding up the approval here. Looking at Santa Cruz Avenue, a lot of businesses have those hanging, I guess they're called blade signs with like two chains hanging vertically down. If you stand at Bistro Vita and look, I believe it would be west towards Alameda de los Pogos, you can see just every business like Walgreens, Starbucks, et cetera, has a sign like that. Going the other way, not so much, but Bistro Vita has a circular, I believe it's like an old tobacco sign of some sort. I think for cohesiveness, I would encourage the applicant to consider a more rectangular sign similar to the other businesses because I think that would add to the cohesiveness of downtown. But again, I have no intention of holding up anything here and I know you already have a permit for that sign anyway. So outside of that, yeah, I'm in support of all these changes. I think everything looks great and have no objection. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair. So we have implemented a new sign permitting process that is all online now. We do have the website, menlopark.gov/signs. Will take you right to our sign page that has all the information about how to apply for a sign. Our sign design guidelines are on there as well. So Mr. Rogers, my colleague, has put in an extreme amount of work to make this a very simple, all online process now for signs. So additionally, some of the blade signs that you're referring to are under canopy signs, which we do specifically allow within the specific plan area. So some of the older businesses do have those double-sided, they're kind of like triangular signs that are underneath their canopies. Those aren't necessarily considered blade signs. So blade signs are primarily vertical signs that are on the side of the building, not underneath the canopy.
Thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner Farrick.
I forgot one thing. I also wanted to give some appreciation for the Grateful Dead acknowledgement plaque. I think that was really cool. Hopefully someone will put a Fleetwood Mac one up around MA or something like that because we have a lot of really cool music history here that should be known by more people. So thank you for that. May I make a motion? Have we gotten that for you? Other people want to do that?
You are, you are always welcome. I have a couple of follow-up questions that I will make, but you're always welcome to, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the use permit for Bistro Vita. And I know there was a second, it was, I think, the sign and, sorry, the agenda item. Of course, it's now reloading. The other item, I believe, was a sign.
The sign permit.
The sign permit. So I'd like to make a motion for both of those items.
Great. We have a motion from Commissioner Farrick. I'll take the opportunity to just ask one or two more questions, mostly clarifying and building on things that have already been said. I think there've been a number of comments just about the complexity of figuring out the sign math and the calculations and the ratios and the formulas related to square footage. And I just wanted to be sure that I understood the staff report conclusion. The proposal is in compliance with the square footage of permissible signs relative to the frontage of the property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So they're not asking for any additional sign area.
Okay. So that's compliant for the front and for the back?
Correct.
Because I know that there's also a different, there's a different math associated with different access points for the properties.
Correct. So we assume that this project or this parcel has a secondary frontage. So normally it's another street, but we see that the parking lot would act as a public thoroughfare. So we count that as a secondary frontage.
Okay, great. Thank you for confirming that the math all worked out. I think there are a couple of places in the staff report where it alludes to the size of the blade, for example. This, the design guidelines for the city certainly specify three square feet and a number of other things about illumination, for example. So those are two things that are in there as stated preferences that this sign just doesn't happen to comply with. So it is illuminated in a way that, and the size. The design guidelines also say that the blades and other ones should be consistent, I'm going to get the language here, considered a proportion to the size of the building and the size of the site and compatible with other signs in the surrounding area. And so I did, like other commissioners, take a look at other signs, particularly some of the other blade signs and found them to be bigger, I think, which the staff report also points out. So is it safe to assume that if there are signs on Santa Cruz Avenue that have gone up since, I think it's 2008, because the design guidelines are noted as being 2008, that they either complied with the guidelines at that point or received planning commission or department approval for being something other than what's stated in those guidelines? Is that a safe assumption?
Without knowing what particular sign you're speaking of, I wouldn't be able to tell you whether or not that they complied or not. So it's, I think it would be more of a question of, we would have to do some research to figure out what permits were issued for what signs.
If I may add to that, if I understand the question correctly, yes. The short answer is signs that have been installed since 2008 would have received a permit from the city provided they applied for a city permit, as we've just mentioned. But in theory, if a permit was applied for, the permit would have been reviewed by staff if the, if the proposed sign met the sign design guidelines to the letter and the zoning ordinance requirements for signs. The zoning ordinance is pretty light in terms of like the details on signage. The design guidelines really implement and provide staff with the framework for review of the sign. If it didn't meet the sign design guidelines, the sign can go to the planning commission for review. We have had a number of signs in the downtown area and elsewhere that have gone through the planning commission for review. For deviations, you know, examples, Suzie Cakes, the use of neon is not recommended by our sign design guidelines, but that was unique to that business, part of their kind of overall theme of their business. And so staff reviewed and provided a recommendation of that project to the planning commission who ultimately approved it. So those are the types of examples. But as we've mentioned, signs do sometimes get installed without the benefit of permits. That does occur.
Okay, thank you. I think Suzie Cakes was actually one of the ones that I had in mind, that I was thinking about. There is another restaurant adjacent that has a large blade sign as well, too, that would be certainly outside of the letter of the design standards. I'm assuming that it also applied for and received permission. It's just helpful as a planning commission to know when there are, there's a history and a precedent for what it is that we do. Because we won't always be here sitting on this, on this commission. It's nice to understand what has happened before we got here and what will, what precedent we will be setting for projects that come after us. And I think that was it in terms of questions that I had. So we have a first from Commissioner Farrick, Commissioner Beruzzi, I'll second, and a second from Commissioner Beruzzi. And before we move into the vote, Commissioner Silverstein, please.
Yeah, I have a potentially non-German comment for staff. It was brought up that our current mechanism for code enforcement is reactive based on community notice or community identified issues, which is totally reasonable. I'm on the planning department's website, or I guess it's through the enforcement code, there's a code enforcement portion of Menlo Park government's website. And it has the mechanism to report any form of code enforcement being the ACT Menlo app. I've used it, familiar with it, totally reasonable. I've used it, familiar with it, totally reasonable. I just wanted to make a comment that a specific category of issue is required when citing any form of concern. And that's, there's no catch-all, and it's not necessarily comprehensive. And so if there is a concern code violation that someone does recognize that is not currently enumerated, there would be no mechanism for them to identify either category or they'd have to fit it into something that doesn't currently apply. And I don't know if that's anything that the Planning Department is involved in, but just I noticed that as part of this conversation.
All right, we have a first and a second. I'm seeing no other hands raised for comments or discussion from commissioners. I will go ahead and call a vote on the architectural control permit and the sign permit in this agenda item. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Yay.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Vice Chair Eric?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Farrak?
Only one vice chair here.
Yes.
I'm handing out titles. Commissioner Sellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein?
Yes.
I am also a yes. So that is seven votes in favor of the resolution, and it passes. Congratulations. Thank you for being here tonight. Good luck. All right, that closes out the three items in our public hearing this evening. And we move on to the next section of our agenda, informational items. Mr. Parada, do we have any updates or informational items from staff?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, we do, staff does have some informational items for the commission this evening. So the next meeting for the Planning Commission will be November 18th. We have three items scheduled for that meeting. And I'll just give you a quick rundown, a use permit for a residential project at 801 Hermosa, a use permit revision, an architectural control revision for an existing office commercial building at 2800 Santill Road, and then a use permit and architectural control revision to extend the Planning Commission's previous approval of a temporary classroom at 2245 AV Avenue. That's Phillips Brook School. So those three items are on the agenda for the next meeting. And then moving forward a little bit, just a reminder, the next meetings in December are December 2nd. That's the week after Thanksgiving. So please do let us know if anyone knows at this point if they will be available. I've heard from some, but just want to make sure, given that's the Monday right after the holiday. And then the final meeting of the year will be December 16th. And just while we're still working through those agendas, I do want to note that at the December 2nd meeting, staff intends to bring the 2025 Planning Commission calendar for review and input by the Planning Commissioners. So staff certainly looks at a lot of potential constraints, you know, holidays, religious holidays, and also, you know, school closures or school breaks, I should say. And so, but do let us know if you note something that could be a conflict for multiple commissioners through that review. We're certainly hoping for feedback. I know last year we made some changes to some meetings based on commission feedback. So look forward to that. And please take a look at your calendars in advance of that meeting. And that concludes my informational items. That's where we're at. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners or commissioners who have other informational items? Vice Chair Eric?
Thank you. I do have a question through the chair. I think if I'm remembering correctly, the final environmental impact report and approval for the Parkline project was slated to come back before the Planning Commission, and I think to City Council before the end of the calendar year. And I was just wondering for any updates on that project?
Yeah, a lot of tentative components to that project. So I'm not in a position, and also we're moving a little bit away from informational items, but we are definitely working on that project. We don't have a specific timeframe. We are looking at potentially later this year, but it could be next year in the early part. So we're still looking, or we're still advancing the project, working through all the entitlements, environmental review. So stay tuned. But that is certainly something that as it becomes solidified, we'll note to the Planning Commission as far in advance as possible.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
I do have a follow-up request. Could either staff or commissioners, if they recall this, I believe I saw something in a public notice as it relates to the, an agenda item for the Housing Commission, seeing something related to Parkline coming up? Am I misrecollecting? Nobody looks like they recognize what I'm thinking about. Okay.
We haven't scheduled Parkline for a Housing Commission meeting at this time.
Okay, then I am misrecollecting and I'm conflating a couple of other things. I apologize for the confusion. Pay no attention.
That is a good reminder, though. The Housing Commission does meet this Wednesday if the commission is following. So they do have a number of items on their agenda. And I should have made that note during reports and announcements. But they will be considering the potential recommendation on the BMR agreement and the request for funding from the city for the 320 Sheridan Drive, 100% affordable housing project. So I should have made that note. So thank you for chugging my memory on that.
Thank you for correcting my memory. That's the thing that I was conflating. Like there was, there was something meaningful from that context. Okay. Seeing no other informational items, I will go and for, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:19. Thank you, everybody.